Welcome to the 2022 candidate interviews that we'll be doing through the Maui Pono Network. Today with us is Robin Knox, who is running for the county council seat for Kihei. Robin, nice to have you here and thank you for running for this office. I know it takes a lot of energy and effort and focus to just start this whole process. What has motivated you to go ahead and put yourself in this situation to run for county council?
That's a good question. Thanks for asking. I want to run because I'm concerned about the quality of life of everyone who lives on Maui. I feel our quality of life is declining, our economy is not serving the people who live here. Our environment is declining. We're not preparing for future environmental problems quickly enough, in my opinion. And I care about people. I don't like to see people homeless. I don't like to see people struggling with housing security, even if they have a house. I want us all to have healthy food to eat and clean water to drink. And so I'm willing to do a lot to be in service to help make those things happen.
I'll do another follow-up with this, Robin. What's your background that qualifies you to get involved on this level with these issues that we face here in the county?
Well, I like to say I'm a professional problem solver. I've been a consultant for 35 years. I'm an environmental scientist. My specialty is water quality, so I everything from drinking water to wastewater to storm water. And I've worked for very large water resource engineering firms and I've been a regulator. I've worked for the regulated community, so I've been a university researcher at three different universities. So I bring a lot to the table and I think that's significant at this point in time because we are facing some severe environmental challenges with climate change. We're already seeing it, you know, people's properties being jeopardized by the ocean. You know, our sewage system was the subject of a Supreme Court case that was history, historic for the Clean Water Act. So I think a lot of money could be saved if we just cut to the chase and work on solving the problems. You know, sometimes regulation seems onerous, but if you, you know, kind of understand the reasons behind it, it usually can be navigated pretty easily. And that's what I do. I solve problems.
Great. Thank you, Robin. Our next questions will come from Anne Fithcathley.
Hi, Robin. Yeah, I know that water is an issue that's near and dear to your heart. I want to ask you a question about, would you support the county asserting eminent domain over the EMI system to administer the public trust water resource for the food security necessities of our community? I know currently it's really in the hands of A and B and Mahi Pono, who are both international corporations. What are your beliefs on that?
Well, I support us having local control of our water systems. You know, eminent domain is always a controversial thing and not used that often. So I would want to see what options are available, but I certainly wouldn't hesitate to make that one of the options that we could potentially pursue. And I think it should be used for other things too, like shoreline retreat, preserving wetlands and streams, you know. So there's a reason that that exists and hopefully the parties can come to some kind of agreement easier than that. But that might be what we have to do. I would like to point out that when food is grown for export using our water, then we're exporting our water. That's something, water footprint is something that a lot of people don't think about. And likewise, when we import our food, we're importing other people's water. So it's something to think about with all of our goods and services.
Yep, particularly with the scarcity of water in Maui, the growing scarcity of water.
Right.
Yep.
Well, it's a worldwide problem and we actually are not the most affected by the scarcity of water. We are fortunate that we have water. We need to be careful with it. We need to use it wisely. And part of that is reusing wastewater instead of throwing it in the ocean. Part of it is conservation, you know, not, right now we're draining streams and aquifers dry to water landscaping in Wailea. And that landscaping could easily be designed to conserve more water. And it also could be designed to use recycled wastewater instead of our drinking water. So we need to think clearly about priorities. What is our highest quality water and what do we want to preserve it for? What use? And for a particular use, does it require, you know, drinking water, quality water? Or is there storm water that we could recover or wastewater we could recycle and use instead and conserve our drinking water for drinking and growing food? We've got to get smarter. We need to work efficiently with the water that we have.
Right. Well, thank you. It's very detailed.
Next questions we'll get from Alan Lloyd. Alan?
Hi, Al. Oh, you're muted.
All right. Aloha and welcome and thank you. And so my question is, many people are working more than two jobs and I think one job is enough. So what's your, what do you think the minimum wage should be in 2022?
Definitely higher than where it is. I support the $18 an hour minimum wage, getting there as quickly as we can. I am a small business owner. I don't pay anyone $100, $20 an hour. I find it hard to get people with any skills at all unless I pay them $30 an hour. And, you know, our wages, that's our cost of living. So we've got to work that one from both ends. We need to break down the cost of housing and the cost of food. And we need, you know, better wages, but we also need better jobs. You know, no one wants wait tables their whole life or most people don't. But that's, that's the job that we have, a lot of. In fact, we have so many of those jobs that employers say they can't even do enough workers. So I would like to see some diversification, you know, different kinds of professions. I'm super excited about all the restoration work that's starting to happen with wetland restoration and reforestation and things like that. Those are actually industries. It takes people who have degrees. It takes people who have nurseries to grow native plants. It takes sometimes heavy equipment and things like that. So, you know, that kind of diversification is something that is, serves our economy and our environment and provides our people with better, higher quality, and in my opinion, more interesting jobs than the tourism industry generally offers. I'm sure there are some great tourism jobs out there, but there tend to be a large quantity of lower paying jobs.
Okay, thank you.
Great. The next question will come from Asia Iyer.
Robin?
Hi, Asia.
So like you, I've been a consultant, but not quite as long as you have. And you're, and you're also a small business owner. And so I, you know, something, the reason that I got involved, I think, in Maui politics is just because our county has not a great reputation for taking care of small businesses. In some ways, we overregulate small businesses. We don't really provide ways for them to function and survive. And it's, it's hard for local families to run small businesses here. Do you, and I think that the council is a uniquely poised entity that can actually make a difference for small businesses. Have you thought about this and in your own experience, are there things that you've seen that could be done better on the county level that the council could address for small businesses?
Well, one thing is having the pool of trained employees, you know, to choose from or potential employees to choose from. It's surprisingly difficult to find someone who knows how to use an Excel spreadsheet, for instance. So I think if we had programs to help people increase their skills, like with basic office software and, you know, other things that business need, that that would be good for the people and for the business because then you would at least have, you know, some options as to people you could hire to do those things. So that's, that's one thing. I think there are some really good things that Maui County is doing for small business. The, at ME DB, they have a four core business course that's really good. But I would like to see that perhaps expanded on and, and maybe some more individual counseling of the businesses at no cost to the businesses, especially when they're first starting up. We need more support in terms of like part-time CFOs. You know, it's a small business really can't afford to have a chief financial officer, but there are a few people out there that do it part-time for multiple small businesses. So supporting more of that kind of resource, I think, would be good. Those are just a few ideas. I'm sure I could come up with more if I think about it more.
Well, and the seat you're running for has been occupied for a while by Kelly King, who is known as a champion of simultaneously environmental issues and businesses. And do you feel like you're, I know that it's hard to fill Kelly King's shoes, but do you feel that you could be a council member that helps watch out for small business, small businesses in ordinances and legislation?
Absolutely. And like I said, I've, I've been a small business owner since 1999. I've supported myself and my family and other people have had jobs with me and supported themselves and their families. So I definitely understand the business viewpoint and also the impact of regulation and, you know, how regulation really needs to be well thought out and well implemented so that it's not burdensome. As a regulator, I was, you know, famous for finding efficient ways to get rid of backlogs and to get permits processed more quickly and things like that. So I know that that can be done and, you know, that's just better for all of us. We're paying for the county employees' time, you know, time is money to the business. So I hesitate to use the word streamline because often that's associated with cutting corners and that's not what we want to do. We want to have the intent of the regulation served, but in an efficient way that doesn't burden businesses. And, you know, I've been a consultant to business as well as to government. So I have a bit of perspective on both sides of that.
Great answers. I appreciate it.
Great. Our next question will come from Mark Joyner.
Yeah, aloha, Robin. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi, Mark.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Good, good. Hey, we're so happy to have you on board and we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that, that you're successful. So, so a couple of quick questions. One is this coming election seems to be revolving around two issues. And one is, of course, is what they're calling the houseless, people that need to deal with finding a home, keeping a home, and also our workers who are having to work like two and three jobs just to be able to pay the rent and, and have a home. And then the second issue, I hope this isn't too many, is the, the whole business of regulating tourism to the point where, you know, we don't, we don't get over-loved, so to speak. We're lucky to have a brand new investigative reporter on island and she just did a fabulous article on the so-called play-to-pay, or pay-to-play, rather, beaches in terms of bringing things to the county council where the various beaches could have a, maybe a kind of division between the people who were involved with the beaches locally and, and the tourists. And so I would welcome your thoughts on either of those or both of those items. Thanks.
You're welcome. We definitely need to comply with our own Maui Island plan and community plans when it comes to the numbers of tourists compared to the numbers of residents. And as someone who lives in South Maui, my comment on the South Maui community plan, which is being reviewed and, you know, updated right now, is that when we look at that Maui Island plan ratio, you know, three residents to one visitor, those visitors are not distributed equally across the island. You know, Kihei and Lahaina and Hana, you know, get their, more than their share of those visitors. So I think that ideal goal needs to be looked at more in terms of individual communities. And there's things that the council can't do, like stop the planes from coming or, you know, prohibit people from the United States from coming or, you know, people who are legally allowed to come. But we can do as this council already has and limit the number of accommodations, limit development of new accommodations. We could do more to regulate the rental car industry, I believe. You know, we shouldn't have more visitors than what our infrastructure can handle and what our, our community plans say that we want to have. So we may have to use more than one means. And I think that's true of all problem solving. There's usually not a silver bullet. You've got to look for, you know, a lot of incremental things that can get you to the goal. But we definitely need to manage it. It needs to be sustainable. And I think people come here because Maui is beautiful and has clean water. I don't think they're going to keep coming here if they're sitting in traffic, breathing auto exhaust and the water is all muddy because we didn't take care of the watersheds. You know, that's, that's not why they're coming to Hawaii.
Absolutely. Did you have some thoughts about the houseless?
I do. You know, this is something that I personally help with almost every day, helping someone who's homeless with their impossible situation. So, you know, the, again, multiple points of attack. What can we do to keep people from becoming homeless, you know, the people that are on the edge? And a lot of that right now is happening because there's no rentals that are affordable. And then even if someone can afford it, there's no rentals that will take pets. And, and even, even though it's not legal, there's even discrimination against families with children. So, you know, we've got to enforce fair housing laws. We've got to give some kind of incentives for landlords to have pets. We need to also look at HUD. You know, the, I was speaking with some of the housing officials for the county and they were saying that they, that Maui County doesn't even use all of the HUD vouchers that the feds give us because we can't find housing for people for that amount of money. And I think, well, the county should do something to make sure that housing is available, you know. I mean, why are we not utilizing funds coming from the federal government into the pockets of landlords just because we don't have, you know, the housing stock? So either the county could maybe give incentives to landlords or support them in some way in taking HUD or maybe the county can build housing for HUD voucher people. So that's one thing. People that are homeless though, right now, at the very minimum, safe parking. We also need safe camping because some of them don't have a vehicle, you know. I had a couple here just a minute ago. That's why my dog was barking because their dog was here too. And they're houseless. They have their own business. They both work. They just can't afford rent and they are not sheltered because they have a dog and won't give their dog up. And, you know, it's almost like class warfare when only homeowners can have dogs and no one, no one else can. That, that doesn't seem like the kind of society I want to live in, you know. So we just have to look at what's missing and provide it. It seems rather straightforward to me. I know there might be a lot of details to get it done, but the, the direction in which we should go seems clear. You have a lot of homeless people. You need homes.
Right, absolutely. Well, you know, since we initiated this process and we've interviewed, I believe, at least two now, maybe three, the whole business of finding housing and the houseless, I too call it homeless, you know, has seemed to be just a critical issue for this next election. And so, so I'm glad that you have some specific ideas, not only specific ideas, but have worked with this as well, which I think is very empathetic. So thank you so much, Robin. Thank you for running, for agreeing to run.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mark. Our next questionnaire will come from Bruce Douglas.
Hi, Bruce.
Hi, Robin. My question for you is, we all talk about getting a diversified economy and not being tourist-based or just all a wealthy people who move here base. How would you go about diversifying the economy of Maui County?
Maybe the obvious things are the things that we need, the things that we are importing or paying people off the island to do. Why aren't we doing those things here? And I understand we can't do everything here, but certainly we can do more here than what we're doing. So we need that circular economy where the money stays here. And that, that's why my campaign slogan is local priorities. When I'm looking at a decision, that's what I'm going to be thinking. Who is this serving? Where is the money going? Is it staying in our economy here in Maui County? Is it helping our residents here in Maui County? Or is it really serving someone else more than our local families and residents who live here? That, that seems to me the place to start, you know. Like I said, we need to restore watersheds. We need to grow local food. We need to have fuel that's not petroleum-based, you know. So there's a lot that we could do with agriculture. There's also high-tech options. There's, you know, if we're, we were, state of Hawaii during the pandemic was importing remote workers, you know, why aren't the state and county out creating opportunities for people to work remotely from Maui County? There, I stay on one of the job search websites just to keep abreast of my industry and, you know, what, what kind of talents out there. And I see more and more remote job listings. So that's something we could encourage and work to, to bring basically any job that could be done remotely, any kind of industry, to, to bring money into Maui County for that.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bruce. And I will ask the next question, Robin. You know, and you're running for the seat in Kihei and certainly there's been a tremendous amount of development in that whole area and a lot of concerns by residents. What do you propose and what do you feel in terms of the planning department and how the local needs in this district can be met based on the amount of real estate sales that are going on? I mean condominiums, $6 million for a condo, you know, it's like, it's, it's really taking off big time. What do you propose to, how, how do you propose to deal with this issue?
Well, the first thing is, the answer is not to build affordable housings in the gulches and the flood zones. I don't think that is the right answer. I do think we need affordable housing and it might not be a popular answer, but I think we should consider building above the highway. I would like to see, and I've said this to the South Maui planning effort, but I still didn't see it show up on their maps. I would like to see rural housing, Malca of the highway in South Maui. Why can't we have one and two acre lots where people can farm? And, you know, especially right there close to the treatment plant, there's recycled wastewater that can be used for farming. And, you know, why, why is it got to be apartment complex, dense development? I know the planners like that, but I don't think most people choose to live that way. I think it's, especially with affordable housing, often the only thing that a person can afford. But most people I talk to would like a little garden space, maybe the opportunity to have a pet. You know, so I'd like to see some different kinds of development, maybe small Ohana-type houses instead of big houses. You know, there's a lot of types of building that haven't been done in South Maui.
Great. Thank you for that. Next question is from Anne.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, back on this housing crisis, how you think, what's your answer like to how to provide more affordable houses for the different AMI levels? And do you think that, that the developers can deliver on the promised units? And that that can be enforced and we can sell enough county land to provide for housing?
Well, I think there are some developers that can deliver on that. What, for me, the challenge is there's not enough of the lower AMI levels and what they say is economically feasible. So we need to figure out how to make it more economically feasible. And that might be using different building materials. It might be building different types of housing. It might require changes to building codes or zoning.
Right.
You know, but we need to figure out how to build affordable housing without putting it somewhere that's hazardous to people's health, you know, highway noise, highway pollution, flooding. You know, none of these are good for our people.
Yeah. And I, I know what you mean about the adding to the congestion in Kihei or Lahaina for providing homes there.
Great. Thank you. Let's, let's go on to the next question. Alan?
All right. I'm unmuted. So since Maui residents pay one of the highest electric rates in the nation and electricity is provided by a private corporation and Kauai pays the lowest, one of the lowest rates in the nation based on electric being provided by a community cooperative, what are your thoughts about supporting the efforts to change our electric distribution system from a private corporation to either a publicly owned and operated system or a cooperative system?
I've often wondered that myself. Why don't we do what Kauai does? We should look into that. We should, and we should look into the options. Often, public-private partnerships can be more efficient than fully public. So we need to look at all of the options and figure out what would be working best for our community. But it's probably not a private for-profit corporation. It's likely to be one of the other options. But yeah, I would want to investigate that and see what to follow.
So you'd want to investigate just to follow up, investigate either having a publicly owned utility or utility that is owned and operated by a co-op?
Either one of those or in addition, possibly like a public-private partnership of some sort. I think we should look at all of those options.
Okay, thank you.
Next questions will come from Asia Iyer.
Hi, Robin again. Where do you, where do you see yourself fitting in on the county council? And what I mean is what committees you see yourself taking a big part in? Which, which committee, if any, would you want to head in the council?
Well, I would definitely like to head a committee that, and of course they reorganize, you know, every time. So I don't know what that committee would be called, but the areas of interest to me are environment, agriculture, you know, water, which is the environmental as well, infrastructure. I have a lot of interest and I think, you know, skill and knowledge to contribute in making decisions about infrastructure as well. And, and the, the housing and homeless situation also appeals to me. So any of those, I, I hope to take a strong leadership like Kelly has on environmental issues, especially climate change and so forth. But I would be happy to be on any of those committees and hopefully lead the environmental committee.
Thank you. We can go on to the next questioner.
Okay, that'll be Mark.
Yeah, hi, Robin. Thanks again. I, I wanted to ask if you had one driving issue in terms of your candidacy that we could kind of put out front for everybody? Maybe besides water. What would that be?
Well, water is part of the answer. My, my top priority is to get everyone's basic needs met, which means they have food, water, and shelter. That's number one. You know, everything else should take second backseat to getting everyone housed and fed and water. And that is not as difficult as it sounds. You know, our current administration during COVID locked people out of the parks when they were houseless and that was their only way to get water. You know, that was one of the things I did was buy water and take it to people who had, who literally could die of thirst because they had no transportation and their water supply was cut off. So we could provide with our park system, we could set aside certain areas for water, for bathrooms, for charging electronics. So, you know, let's get those basic needs taken care of and, and make sure everyone has food, water, and shelter. That, that's what's driving my campaign is I, I care about everyone's quality of life, whether they're houseless or they're working, you know, three or four jobs, mom and dad working two jobs each, trying to raise children and they're, they're struggling with the high cost of living. And, you know, everyone, I care about everyone's quality of life. And none of us want to live in, you know, stress and illness and filthy environment. You know, I don't know anyone that wants that.
Yeah, no, no, I think that's right on the, right on the money. Thank you, Robin.
Our next question will come from Bruce Douglas.
Hi, Robin. Question for you is about local farmers. We all talk about having diversified agriculture. And right now the land's all owned by one corporation who's not been good about sharing that with other farmers and just growing corporate crops themselves. How would you go about getting more farmers, more farmers access and making it affordable for farmers to actually grow produce locally?
I think there's a lot of, a lot of activity that could take place. One of the things we need to do to support local agriculture is the infrastructure for it, for small farmers, you know? I, I do try to eat 100% local, but I miss convenience food. And our local agricultural infrastructure doesn't have a way for us to turn local produce into local convenience food very easily. So we need more commercial kitchens. We need more refrigerated trucks, you know, things like that, that are to be available to farmers. The food hub model that came out during the pandemic is extremely successful, but those are the exact challenges they started running into is, you know, we need a space and we need, you know, a refrigerated truck and these kinds of things. So we, we need to think of what do those farmers need to go to market? And then I, I think there's a lot of farmers who want to live on their farms. So again, maybe that's why having more rural housing development, maybe changing some of the zoning regulations so that it's easier to have, you know, multiple numbers of people living on ag land and farming. You know, there are some county-owned and some Mahekano fields that are offered to farmers, but, you know, they're not necessary, are probably not organic. And a lot of the small farmers on Maui want to grow organic. So we need more of those options. And I don't know if there's county land that's ag land that could be utilized in that way to have an organic, you know, agricultural park. That would be truly awesome. And, and, and there's your circular economy again. It's, it could be a restorative practice, you know? So things that maybe you're going to the landfill, green waste and, you know, food waste and other things could be composted and put back on the soil and, and help remediate soil so that we can have those opportunities for organic foods to be grown.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Robin, so far for all this insight. I was just wondering if our team has any additional questions? If you raise your hand, if you have an additional burning question of Robin. Anne, was that you raising your hand?
Oh, yeah. Yes. Hi, Robin. One more. Yeah, um, you know, the Charter Commission worked really hard to come up with some proposals to help promote transparency and ethical government. And are you familiar with any of those amendments?
I have not.
I mean, the proposals?
I have not, not even to the extent that I can. But I, I will tell you that transparency, ethics, and efficiency in government are very high on my priority list.
Okay, yeah, that, it's going to take all of us to get really educated on those proposals when it comes up on the ballot.
That's for sure.
And educate everybody else as well.
Right.
There were so many of them to start with, and unfortunately, quite a few were voted down.
Well, I will follow up on that.
Okay. I want to really on.
Educate everyone about them. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Great. Alan, you had another, another question?
There we go. And it's, what are your thoughts on, either the first or second highest cost for small businesses is rent? Sometimes it's the first, sometimes it's the second after staff or employees or contractors. And we all know that rent is out of control in Maui. So what are your thoughts on first, commercial rent control and then second, residential rent control?
Good point.
I have to worry about, wonder about the commercial rents. There's so much empty property, empty commercial property on Maui. I don't know about the other islands, but on Maui, I'm seeing that. Maybe we should, you know, tax empty commercial space that is a granted to a business so that, that there's more incentive to, you know, offer affordable rents. But right now places are sitting empty because people can't afford the rents. On, I think we're going to have to do some kind of rent control on, on residential rents. And one idea I have is that we recognize that this housing situation on Maui is modified housing, modified housing. It's, you know, it's a, it's an industry, these are businesses and, and we need to regulate them as such. There, because of the housing shortage, there are a lot of abusive landlords. There are a lot of tenants that are having to move every year and that is just very devastating financially and emotionally and, you know, destabilizes your whole life. I know because I had to move four times in two years.
It destabilizes kids in school so they have to transfer schools.
I, I can't even imagine doing that with children. Yeah. So we need rent security as well as affordability. And, and, you know, that might involve having to cap rents or cap profits from rent or have greater regulation of the housing rental industry. You know, to make sure people are paying their taxes for one thing and that they're complying with the landlord tenant code. You know, you could have a form of licensing that has a really low annual fee and, you know, easy to get. You just have to take some landlord tenant training in order to get it. But easy to lose if you don't follow the code, that you don't pay your taxes and things like that. So, you know, I think a lot could be done with this industry by just recognizing that it is an industry and maybe price control is a purpose.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank all our interviewers. And Robin, again, thank you for running for office. Certainly, it's a big challenge, a long stretch. We're talking until November. So, and, and I don't think it was mentioned that you are being endorsed by Kelly King. So, you know, someone who is very respected in our community. Again, I think that goes a long way too. So thank you so much for being part of this interview process with us. And the information will be available at the MauiPonoNetwork.org site. And also you can get other interviews that we'll be having then at our website and also on Akaku TV. Aloha.